Okay, it's nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock. I'd call this meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the February 1st County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kerski. And we have implemented something new. If you want to speak at public comment, if you would please sign in on the sheet over there so that we can get your spelling of your name and your address correctly. With that, we will move on to a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's one item on the consent agenda under the, I don't want to pull it, but I just want to point it out. Under the auditor's account with the county treasurer, I believe, and the number of, what I'm getting to is the NSF checks have really, okay, reduced, and we haven't seen anything in almost six months now, which I don't know exactly what's going on, but I'm pretty happy with what.
I'm going to fill you in really quick. So the sheet that is in the folder over there is $42,219.85. I asked for an updated list yesterday. The treasurer's been working really hard and has found a law, I guess, or a statute where those monies can be collected, and she has been working diligently to work to downsize that list. And as of yesterday, she had it down to $25,571.99. So you'll see that probably reflected in our next month's non-sufficient checks. But she's doing a really good job of bringing that down. That's been kind of a bane of our existence for a lot of years.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You know, if the treasurer is available, we could, I saw her walk by earlier. She could come up and give us a report.
Or we could have her, if she's in, she might not be around tonight, but it would be a good thing she could come up and talk to the commission about what she's been doing.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay, with that, we will go on with opportunity to public comment. Is there anyone for public comment? And I will, go ahead, come on up. I will remind you that last week, we also implemented something new. You get five minutes total. And so a great big clock is going to come up up here, and when you see it, that you're done, you're done. So, and it will start when you start, so.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Cindy Meyer. I'm signed in on the sheet. This morning, I want to talk to you about drop boxes. Drop boxes were used in the 2020 election. Since COVID was introduced, it provided an opening for COVID relief dollars funded by Mark Zuckerberg, Mr. Facebook, to be fused into our elections. The dollars earmarked as COVID relief submitted to Minnehaha County amounted to $91,266. You can verify this number by looking at the IRS 990 submitted by the Center for Technology and Civil Life. These extra dollars given to counties were to be used in preparing for the election. Getting ready for an election included the purchase of drop boxes. Minnehaha County purchased two drop boxes at a price of $3,800 each. On those boxes were included a cheap and generic lock, so more money was spent outfitting the box with better and more secure locks. Who had the authority to authorize the purchase and use of drop boxes? I have been told the drop boxes were monitored by camera. Were high-resolution cameras used? Were the cameras put in an area to have perfect sight of what was going on at the drop box? Drop boxes can be vandalized, unlocked, and are subject to ballot drops. Was anyone monitoring the drop boxes during the day? If there is film footage from evening hours, has the footage been examined? I've heard it reported that the film footage was not reviewed. If it wasn't reviewed, do we know whether or not ballot drops took place? Drop boxes are a known mechanism for vote harvesting and fraud. There are no national standards for the drop boxes or the locks. Voting ballots are one of the most valuable commodities in our democracy. Jurisdictions that use the drop boxes cannot ensure that the ballots within the drop boxes are secure against tampering, theft, and destruction. We, as voters, should expect and demand they be removed. As a member of the South Dakota canvassing group, we are requesting drop boxes not be used in any future elections. Ballots can be mailed in or dropped off at the auditor's office for those that aren't able to vote in person. Voting is a right and a privilege. It shouldn't be a task as easy as driving through a fast food restaurant. Today is National Freedom Day, so let's work to keep our, let's work to keep our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Are there any other public comments? Give us a sec, just give us a second and we'll restart.
Oh, the pressure.
Yeah, oh, the pressure. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Gary Meyer, and I debated whether to come up here today, but I felt I needed to come up and defend the members of the South Dakota canvassing group. I am a part of that group, and I was rather disturbed by the article that came out in the paper last week from your county correspondent reporter. He reported on what happened on January 25th at the county commission meeting. And I feel like it's very obvious he's taking the path of fake news in his reporting. Instead of doing his research, he bases his reporting on opinion. In his January 28th article, he states, and I quote, "Over the last several weeks, members of a group looking at what they claimed were election irregularities have spoken." Now, his assumption of election irregularity being claimed is a false statement. Our group has obtained the Secretary of State voter rolls and have actual data to back up the information we present to you all. On top of that, our group has thus far not addressed election irregularities, but rather is merely presenting information to the county commissioners that clearly shows our voter rolls are a mess and are open to the possibility of election integrities. And he goes on to say, and I quote, "But although it seemed at least three people from that group were present this week, they did not offer any comments, possibly due to the new regulations of having to sign in beforehand," unquote. It is unclear where this reporter received his information, on who was at the meeting and their purpose for being there, as we don't sign in and we don't list our reason for being here. And third, he continues to state that although the chairperson offered on more than one occasion to allow public input, still no one came forward, and I assumed he was referring to our group. Unlike this reporter, our election integrity group prefers to rely on facts, not opinion, and we want you to know that. We had nothing to present at last week's meeting. That's the reason we didn't get up. We were busy researching. We don't bring stuff forward to you until we research it and make sure our facts are correct. Perhaps as your county correspondent journalist, he might adopt some of our integrity and do his homework and research before writing an article regarding what happens at these meetings, filled with his opinions, to what I feel try to discredit our group. And instead, give our group credit for getting involved and looking in to make sure our local and federal elections are safe and secure. We do this all on our own time. It's volunteer time and money. We are not getting paid to do this. We do, however, appreciate election integrity information being in the newspaper, so that was a plus. But we would also appreciate if this reporter would provide accurate information to the public and avoid speculation.
Thanks, Gary. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at public comment time? Seeing no one, we will go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing on the legislative redistricting update for Minnehaha County. Ben Kite. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, Commissioner Ben Kite for Auditor's Office. Yeah, this morning, I'd like to give you an update on our progress in completing the legislative redistricting for Minnehaha County. So we've been, Auditor's Office has been working with Planning, Zoning, Heidi Jerky in particular, and the GIS department and our voter registration database vendor Total Vote to develop an updated new voter splits to correctly identify the newer modified boundaries for the legislative districts and municipalities. So I'm happy to report that on 25th of January, that we were able to apply these new splits into Total Vote to complete the updates resulting from the redistricting process for Minnehaha County. So just as a reminder, in 2020, with the census, that required the state legislature to redraw the boundaries for the various legislative districts based upon population. At the same time, several municipalities within Minnehaha County will have to update their wards. So for example, Sioux Falls has five districts within the municipality. They've adjusted those boundaries to reflect the changes in population. So the, the boundaries of the eight existing and the one new legislative district that were included in the change along with the wards of these three municipalities at this time. So through this process, we had to update records of some 35,000 voters to place them in the new districts or wards. So it was a major undertaking for the office. So I mentioned splits. I think it maybe helps to kind of give some context what that means. So that each voter, obviously, they live in a, in a precinct that identifies where they should vote. Within that, each voter also lives within a legislative district, a house or a senate district. You know, each voter lives in a school district, possibly a municipality. So if you live in Sioux Falls, you, that's municipality, and then you're within that, you're living in some ward. Everybody also lives within a circuit court district. There could be others, special districts like water districts, soil conservation districts. There's consumer power districts. So what we need to do when we identify for each voter is how were they, we have to have these combination of all these jurisdictions that we identify where you live so that you will get the correct ballot, basically, when you come into the polling places. And that, that's the process that takes a lot of time, and that's why we needed our GIS staff to help us so much. So we ended up with about 200 different splits, different combinations of jurisdictions for all our, about 125,000 active voters. And as, excuse me, as part of this process, we also took advantage of some updates to Total Vote, which allowed us to map out the precinct boundaries. We had, that wasn't available before. Total Vote had updated their system. Minnehaha County took advantage of that. And we're now the first county with, in South Dakota anyway, to use that functionality within Total Vote. And I think that will help us as we look forward to possibly next year, looking at realigning our precincts with the changes in the population and the changes to the districts to make it easier for our voters when they come to the polls. But if you have any questions on that process, I think it was just a magnificent effort by our staff. Took a long time, a lot of coordination with a lot of people, but I think we have an excellent result.
Questions? Commissioner Burr.
Auditor Kite. So we have 74 precincts, right? And those 74 precincts represent different conservation districts, water districts, legislative districts. So on each ballot, you're going to have all kinds of different things. Now, that's where it can potentially get confusing because, you know, you're going to have two legislative districts voting in, in one location because the precincts lines don't line up with the legislative districting lines.
That's correct.
And then you have to consider, for example, Republican precinct committee member races and all this kind of stuff. So how much, how many different races are on the average ballot?
I, I would guess there's at least 10 to 20 could be races or questions, right? You could have questions on, on a typical ballot.
And that might be different across the street in the different precincts.
That's correct. Yeah, you could be a resident of Sioux Falls in the Harrisburg School District, or you could, somebody, live across the street from somebody who's resident of Sioux Falls, but in Sioux Falls School District.
It's pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kerski.
Districts, 74, is that right?
We have, well, actually, 75 precincts.
75 precincts, I'm sorry. We kind of control that locally, from what I understand recently. Is it too many? I mean, is that something that should be addressed? Do we need to have that many? Would it make your job easier? Would it make it less confusing?
You know, that's something, you know, I think we want to look at in 2023. I think there's just a lot of other activity going on, but I, those are generally determined by a population, right? And how efficiently the voters can use those polls, right? There's supposed to be some minimum wait times that voters would experience. So we have to look at, you know, how, how many voters are in that, those precincts and see if we need to align those. We've tried to align them with the legislative district boundaries. That makes it less confusing for them when they come in. You don't want to, ideally, you'd like to have a precinct that represents one legislative district instead of, you know, multiple. But yeah, that's something we just have to look at next year.
I'm glad to hear that we are, because I think it's probably time, you know, the way we've done business for 140 years, it doesn't necessarily mean we need to keep doing it that way. But you mentioned population. So are legislative districts based on the population or the number of voters?
Population, right.
So if we have the mail stations where we might have a district with a mail station that has thousands of people who claim that for their residence for mailing purposes, you know, to be a South Dakota resident, but they're probably not registered to, probably not registered to vote in South Dakota, I mean, does that convolute the whole?
I'm not sure if it makes any more convolution of, if that's the right word, than any other situation, right? You, you have a portion of registered voters to non-registered voters, but the, the, I'm not sure if it's the constitution or our law requires us to look at the population of, and not, and then, I guess, it just assumes that they could all vote.
Okay, yeah. Something to think about or maybe look at, but don't need to add any conspiracy or anything, but.
Not something within our control. We still have to look at the population.
Commissioner Burr.
Couple things. One is, I know there were 69 precincts when I first ran, and now we have 74. Additionally, we may still have one voting location in Lincoln County, the church down there at 57th and Minnesota. Is that still a voting location? Well, anyway, it's in Lincoln County, but it's where the neighborhood goes. And, and then talking about the RVers for a minute, I think that they generally do register to vote here because that way they can continue to register their vehicles at a greatly reduced price. And I talked to our previous treasurer about it, and she was a Democrat. We know most of these voters on the RVers are Republicans. But she said she'd rather have their money and worry about their, their vote later, and that's honestly what she said.
I would like to commend the Auditor's Office for all the work they've done because they got some of this information a little bit late from the legislature, later than the deadlines were supposed to have been, so they've really had to scramble to try to get this work done and put a huge burden, I think, on their office. So thank you for working hard to complete this and complete it in a, in an efficient and safe way. So.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thanks, Ben. We'll move on to item number 11, which is a briefing on the debt insurance, which, Ben again.
Yes. So as we previously reported, the Auditor's Office has engaged Collier Securities to issue $7.4 million of debt to finance the construction of the needs of, for the Minnehaha County's new highway shop, extension remodel and refinancing of some existing debt. On January 26th, Moody's Investor Services affirmed Minnehaha County's credit rating at AA1. Within their press release announcing Minnehaha County's credit rating, Moody's commented on Minnehaha County's sizable and growing tax base anchored by the city of Sioux Falls, the healthy financial reserves that we have, significant revenue rising, raising capabilities, and the low debt and pension capabilities. I guess I would also comment if, through our conversations with Moody's, the conversation was more about what are the things that Minnehaha County will, they'll be looking at to potentially move us to Moody's highest rating, which would be AAA, not, you know, the risk necessarily that we have going down. They're very impressed with our financials. I think they'll continue to monitor those over the next couple of years. And if they continue, I think we could see us having the highest rating available for Moody's. Any questions on the debt issuance?
Questions? Thanks, Ben. Number 12 is authorize the Minnehaha County's participation in the fiscal, as a fiscal agent in the submission of the RFP by the Accessible Housing Advisory Board for grants from MacArthur Foundation. And we have Amos this morning. Good morning, Amos.
Good morning. My name is Amos. I'm here to authorize, request for authorization for Minnehaha County to be a fiscal agent for an, a proposal, application we're going to put forward to MacArthur Foundation to implement a Justice Involve program in relation to housing. Late December, the Minnehaha County supported the Accessible Housing Advisory Board to put forward a lot of interest that we were invited for. Out of the 23 that were invited, Minnehaha County was further selected amongst the 10 counties to present a detailed implementation plan for, to cover the next six months if we are awarded. And the fiscal agent in this case that we require, requesting for is to be able to draw funding up for a minimum of $620,000 to $775,000 to cover an implementation, a planning period, which is about six months. After the six-month period, we, after the six-month period, we would identify which programs that we, as a community, would be rallying around, and that would eventually give us the bigger sums that we are looking for, too. So I'm here to announce that we were further selected for, out of the 25, I mean, 26, 23 that were initially invited, we were considered to be among the 10 so far to submit this. And we are asking the county authorization for the, for our auditor's office to serve as a fiscal agent.
If there are any questions for Amos, we also have Carrie Benz from Highway, or from, excuse me, Human Services, who's worked really hard on this, not from the highway, and Erin Surtzka from USD, who is working as one of our project managers. So if you have questions for any of those, Commissioner Kerski.
First of all, I'm supportive of the program. It looks like a great, great thing in the fact that we were asked to apply speaks volumes for the people that are managing and how they feel about us being able to move this program forward. When I read through it yesterday, just a couple of comments, or notes I put down, who's responsible for the overall management of the program? I mean, it involves the county, the city, law enforcement, basically. And are there any specific reporting requirements? Are we looking at goals or specific outcomes from this?
So the Affordable, Accessible Housing Advisory Board will be the implementation agent. In this case, the Affordable, Accessible Housing Advisory Board is made up of the county and the city and some members of the community. So that will, that agency will be the lead implementation agency. Now, in terms of reporting, the six-month period is to put together our partners and stakeholders to have a discussion on what programs and interventions we're looking to address. And out of that, the USD is selected as the evaluator. We will come up with the implementation mechanism as well as the budget and then the reporting requirement and all of that. I think MacArthur Foundation through Urban Institute actually spells out the reporting requirements for us. And then when we get there, that'll be, that'll be part of the complete proposal we are submitting to them for approval.
So we do have some latitude in how we spend this money, what type of programs we want, that type of thing.
Absolutely. It's a community-driven approach to solving some of our housing challenges. So it's going to be a blend of our existing resources, in this case, leveraging resources that our community already have, and then looking for them to add on to us so that we can blend that. And that is going to be something that we, we as a community determine to be solutions to our problems here.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Bender.
So Amos, thank you. I know you guys have been working really hard on this because we had a short deadline. I'm just curious, I mean, this is a lot of money that we're talking about. Can you help the community understand what percentage of this money we think goes to administration and planning versus how much will actually go into solutions, housing for folks?
The next stage, if we're lucky to, after we submit this proposal, would be the planning period. And that is when we would have the budget details as to how much would be committed to administration as well as how much would be for implementation. But I would say that as part of the implementation mechanism, after the initial six months, the funds, which would typically range from 1.5 million to about $5 million per site, would work through what they call program-related investments. In this case, we're identifying some organizations or agencies in our community that has a financial backbone and who have experience in housing programming, really, to be able to draw down this funding. And it's, it's kind of a lengthy process, but the program-related investments, in this case, would go to developers as well as community financial institutions, and then some will go to case management as well.
So just to be kind of con in a little bit more, so we're initially, we're asking for, or we're maybe eligible for, you know, almost three-quarters of a million dollars. We're not suggesting that three-quarters of a million dollars is going to be spent on planning lunches and meetings. Where some significant portion of that money would actually be available for housing the folks that we're having trouble housing right now.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to get to.
I would ask Erin, maybe Surtzka, to, to talk a little bit about that, if she's, we do not have a budget prepared, but we have to have just some past history of how some of that money might be spent, because Commissioner Bender's right. You're not going to spend $650,000 to $750,000 on planning something.
Good morning. Erin Surtzka, USD. And yes, you're exactly right. So for the six-month, what they're asking for right now is to submit an applicant, an application regarding our community capacity and leadership on implementing a planning phase for six months. That planning phase, we have access to dollars to help support that planning phase. At the end of the six months, we'll have a housing plan, which, you know, Amos explained, would be a combination of the Ahab plus some criminal justice partners to develop a solution to help house those in our community with their criminal history. So the planning period, we're able to pull some funds down, and so there will be some funds pulled down. Out of the 650 to 720, it would be at most probably 150 to 200 at most. What that would pay for is they want us to have a plan. They want us to have baseline. They want us to be ready with an evaluation. To, dollars spent on that, we would hire a professional facilitator from the community to come in to facilitate these meetings. We're going to propose that one full-time staff member is part of Amos's team to help implement this plan, something we're very excited to be asked for, but they're asking for a pretty tight turnaround. It's only six months to plan and develop a plan, which we all have been involved in different housing things in our community, as we have a good start. But then they want like an 18-month turnaround, which is a lot when you're looking at housing. So there'll be a full-time staff that we're proposing be on Amos's team at the city. So those are, will be some of those costs for that planning. Hopefully, get his staff on board right away and then continue using some of that money to continue that staff. The remaining of that $720,000 can be put toward the solution of implementation. So again, at most, most places will be around, you know, 130 to 200 tops for this facilitation and planning. And what this is model off of is, an Urban Institute is the same, and MacArthur's the same partnership that granted us our first Triage Center grant. So that planning process, we went through the Triage Center here. As you all know, it's up and going and successful. So they're really modeling it off that process we did. So we're doing, basically, this proposing the same type of process, which, you know, puts us ahead, I think, with them, because this is very competitive, as well as we know it's a model that works in our community as evidence, so.
Thanks, Erin. Commissioner Kerski.
So that, basically, if. So that, basically, a full-time individual, would they be an employee of the county? Would they be a?
Right now, it's discussion that it would be part of the city under, yeah, under Amos's team.
We are only, they are only proposing that we are the fiscal agent. So we will not be doing hiring and firing through the Minnehaw County. We are the fiscal agent.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kersky?
Madam Chair, in my, this is now my 16th year, MacArthur Foundation has helped us many, many times. In fact, you probably are more aware of it than I am, working at the JDC and obviously the Link and others, maybe, they've been very good to us over the years and we are blessed to have their patronage.
Yeah, they think we're pretty awesome, which is kind of nice. Additional comments? I guess I would be looking for a motion then to authorize the submission of the RFP.
It's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Recall, vote? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Amos, if you would just sign in on our sheet so we can get the correct spelling of your last name, that would help our staff out, so, thank you. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign professional service agreements with Civil Design, Inc. for the preliminary designs of Project MC 20-06, Structure 50-101-080, Bridge Replacement. Steve, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This morning, we're seeking your approval for us to enter into a preliminary engineering agreement with Civil Design, Inc. to perform preliminary engineering to replace this structure. The structure was identified to be deficient this last year and we would like to get a jump on getting this replaced this year.
Questions for Steve? Commissioner Kersky?
Morning, Steve.
Morning.
As bridges go, this one's not that old.
No, it's not, but it is a double D, a double T construction, which we've been having some corrosion issues on. It's a type of bridge that was pretty common back in the 1970s and 80s that the salt seems to attack a little more than a typical gutter bridge.
Do we have more of these types of bridges?
Yeah, and we're in the process of, you'll be seeing more of these being replaced in the coming years.
Okay.
Ms. Commissioner, Berth.
Steve, we have something like 102 bridges and box culverts, right?
We have 194 structures counting loans on the township.
Structures, okay. And by the way, you looked great on TV the other day, demonstrating to the, to the TV people that you know where the bridges are. Anyway, obviously, we're going to support this and how many do we have, how many are we going to fix this year?
This year, the next item is rehab of a bridge by Sherman and then we're going to replace this one. We're getting ready to issue a culvert replacement project for bids next week, so we'll be replacing it. This year, we're just replacing two, or rehabbing two structures. This is actually the bridge that you saw me at on television Friday.
You're not on, there in the picture?
No.
This bridge is used extensively during the school year because it's close to the rural Tri Valley School.
And the Harvest also with the processing facility by Lyon. With Highway 149 being canceled this year, this bridge is adjacent to that, so the timing is good for us because we don't have to worry about detour traffic for the Highway 149 project.
Additional questions? Commissioner Berth?
So Steve, I know because I'm your liaison, we've had a little bit of chance to talk about this, but could you just elaborate about how the timing of this project is going to work with Harvest and the school traffic?
We solicited proposals from several firms with a very tight deadline. We needed to have plans completed and ready for bid in mid-May. We talked to a couple contractors and they were confident that if we got the project out for bids, by the end of May, we could have a contractor, there is work, there is contractors available to do this work at this point. We should get decent pricing and it's only a 67-foot span. We don't know what's going to go in there for sure. That will be something CDI will determine, but we're pretty confident that they'll be able to get a start on this project in June and limit the delays to both the school starting and Harvest.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
In a perfect world.
Yeah.
Here, I'd make a motion to get the services for preliminary engineering on structure number 50-101-80. I believe that's the one we're on.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Civil Design Incorporated for the construction administration of Project MC 21-10, Structures 50-330-066, Rehabilitation.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is a structure on County Road 105, just south of Sherman. This contract was awarded by the commission in December. This is a big fund grant project. CDI did the preliminary design and final design. This contract allows us to use CDI to do the contract administration for this project. 80% of the cost will be reimbursed by the state.
Great. Questions? Motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement with Civil Design.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is an informational briefing. Oh, excuse me, I didn't silence my cell phone. Wow!
Hey, that means you buy donuts.
That's probably the first time that's ever happened to me. Sorry. Informational briefing on the Minnehaw County IT Department. Monty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here this morning. As you said, Monty Wattenbach with the Minnehaw County IT Department. I was kind of volun-picked here this morning to kick off the presentations from the department heads and I was asked to keep things brief. So no PowerPoint presentation. I'll try to keep it brief and give you the opportunity to ask any questions you may have. So I just want to kind of start off, as I've talked to you over the years about our evolution off of the AS400, there is an end in sight. I anticipate that that might be somewhere around 2024. It's kind of hard to put an exact date, but if I was to guess one, that's what I would say. Five, five years ago, eight years ago, I wouldn't have given you a date because I always explained that it was a, an evolution off versus a migration. You know, for 25-some years, the county developed various applications and the county relied on that platform. So I'm not going to kick that platform. It served the county well, but was definitely due for replacement. And through the course of the last eight, nine years, we have purchased applications, we've developed applications. The county, not just my group, but the county as a whole, has, have put in a lot of work to migrate and evolve off of that platform. I also wanted to touch base on a project that will be kicking off here, hopefully, pending commission's approval, which will be the PBK solution for the state's attorney's office. So PBK stands for Prosecutor by Carpel and that's a solution that was selected by the state's attorney's office, who has experience working with that solution at a previous The county IT department involvement is mostly going to be the interfaces and database migration, right? So the expectation for everything that we've done has been we're migrating all data. For the state's attorney's office, I would expect we're moving everything, okay? What I mean by everything is the last game in decades worth of history, people, charges, all the information that, that they have in their current case management system will be migrated to the new system. And then there's some important interfaces. Interfaces with these large projects are always the biggest risk and so we've had some conversation meetings with PBK and I feel comfortable that we can get the information out of that system and interface in with the other systems that we need to. So that's the portion that, that the IT department will be involved with and it's going to take many hours from the state's attorney's office to work with PBK to figure out how the system needs to be configured, if there's workflow, how that's going to work. So there will be a fair amount of work from, from their group as well. And my third and last item is to discuss Office 365 briefly. So up to this point, I've kind of resisted going to Office 365 to help save money. We are able to skip Office versions to keep our costs down. And as time moves, moves on here, Microsoft is really pushing customers to go to their Office 365 subscription model. That model does have advantages. Our users will have larger mailboxes. Most department heads from time to time have reached out to me and asked for larger mailboxes. Most of you have. With Office 365, Microsoft is, is pretty generous with the amount of space that, that they provide with Office 365. Updates to that version of Office are incremental for forever kind of thing because you're paying a subscription versus when we go from Office 2013 to Office 2019, things are moved around and different and people struggle for a little bit to get used to where things have been moved. So there are some updates or some improvements in that regard. We've seen some things security-wise where Microsoft appears to patch their mail servers that offer, that host their email before they offer those patches to on-premise exchange customers. So there's potentially some advantages with that as well. The biggest disadvantage is, is cost. So Office 365 will end up costing the county somewhere between $12.50 per month to $20 per month, depending on the version that we choose to go with. So it will probably give or take triple our, our Microsoft cost. And I've warned you that, about that over the past couple of presentations that I've given. But I do feel it's inevitable and like I said, there, there are some advantages to doing it. So those are my three bullet points that I was recommended to stick to, but I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Monty? Commissioner Bender?
I would just say, I mean, I want to thank you and your team. You were clear about what your role will be going forward with PBK, but you downplayed the significant role you've played to get us to where we are today. And so I really want to thank you that the whole issue about the interfaces was really critical to getting us to a point where we're, we're ready to come forward to the commission on that. And so thank you very much for that.
Thank you as well. As, as you know, you're a part of a team that kind of went through and did an evaluation of the current system, PBK, as well as the, the challenges that, that we had to kind of overcome for, for everybody at the county to be comfortable with that change. So we're not affecting anybody else in a negative, in a negative way. So great team effort and thank you for that as well.
Additional questions for Monty? Commissioner Kersky?
I had an AS400 in my office 20 years ago, so still doing Cobal and Fortran or will this get us away from all that?
It'll get us away from that.
Okay.
So we really haven't been actively developing in those languages for, for a while. We still maintain applications that we've developed and those are even more challenging than, you know, AS400 applications that, that are purchased because they do something sometimes very specific, maybe tailored to us, exactly how the, the user or department wants. So anyways, it's been a combination of developed and purchased, you know, but I would say across the whole country, there's a lot of local governments that have AS400s that haven't made the steps that we've made and they're going to find themselves in some challenging situations because that is a difficult platform to support as we move forward because the staff that comes out to work with the hardware and the staff that does development in that language, those staff are harder to find and...
You have to go to the nursing home to find them just about, but my point is, you and your staff have done a great job, I mean, working, like you said, with the departments and what do you need and how can we make this work? We have a lot of local stuff. You guys have done fantastic work. My only concern is, is on the PBK and I know a lot of time and effort has gone into making sure this is the right thing, but when we were briefed by them, the vendor, the people from PBK, they did say and advised quite strongly that we have a project manager that is going to see the implementation of this software through and I'm concerned about it and really for me to get behind it completely, I need to know, are we going to do that? And if we're not, why or how are we going to manage the process? Because it is a very, I mean, the implementation, the timeline, looking at all the boxes that need to be checked and it concerns me.
I think Commissioner Bender might have a comment on that. She's been working very hard on this.
Oh, it doesn't, I mean, either one of us could, but I mean, we have spent quite a bit of time since our last meeting looking at that issue and, and the whole group. I know that Carol and Tyler met this week and we are likely going to be coming forward with a proposal that Tyler has some capacity to be the project manager for that after visiting more with PBK, giving Tyler an opportunity to visit with them and kind of getting more of a handle about how much time is involved. I think that is the proposal that we will be bringing forward and he has project management training and experience, so.
And to add to that, so PBK will have a project manager that will set up the schedule. So that schedule will determine when they're meeting with the state's attorney's office to configure XYZ, work with them to get forms. So the PBK will have their own project manager. I think we've always been insistent that, that we have our project manager, we just weren't sure what that looked like. And so from the county team, Carol has, has communicated that Tyler's comfortable doing that, but there's kind of some understanding there that when it comes to the more technical things related to the interfaces and database conversion, that's where we, you know, provide our expertise and work as project managers if need be, but I view that more as a technical role, but you know, it's going to be a team effort.
Okay.
Commissioner Bender?
I would just add too, I mean, not all of this, I mean, Tyler will make sure that boxes get checked and that people show up, but the state's attorney, no mistake about it, the state's attorney's office is who's going to really have to carry the heavy water on this project to make sure that it gets transferred over in a way that, that the whole thing is very usable for them. So overall, they're the ones that really are going to have a heavy lift here.
Yep, and I view Daniel as the sponsor. He's really the one that is, you know, leading his team and providing the leadership for this project. He's, has an office manager that I think is going to have a very important role as well. So not necessarily one project manager, I think that there's a few on our side.
Additional questions for Monty?
Okay. Thanks, Monty, and thanks for jumping into a spot. We're just starting now with hearing from all of our different departments. Each week, we'll hear some, from someone, a different department. Monty's our first. We try to do all departments before we get into budget season, just to give them an opportunity to talk about what's in their budget. So thanks a lot for being the first one.
Thank you.
And then we'll move to item, to item number 16 was consider a petition of compromise of lien of DPNO number 59120 in the amount of $29,810.26. Melinda, good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today's action requested is to consider a motion to compromise and release lien DPNO 59120 in full with no payment. The petitioner alone has applied for a $300,000 home loan, has deposited earnest money and completed the home inspection. He is scheduled to close on the purchase of a home for him and his wife on February 23rd, 2022, but this lien will need to be satisfied before he can move forward. The couple married in 1999 at the Ivory Coast and in 2016 in the US, but keep separate names. This household has two liens, one for the petitioner, 59120, for $29,810.26 and one for his wife, lien 57275, for $39,866. This is important because these liens have been filed, there have been lien fees filed jointly for juvenile legal representation in the amount of $11,532.80. However, for the purpose of the loan, only lien 59120 requires satisfaction by the lender. Both liens were included for your review. The petitioner explained the circumstances which led to the lien and his narrative and expresses his desire to be a homeowner. He is currently employed and provided two recent paychecks, showing an average net pay of $2,085 over two weeks. They both filed 2020 income taxes separately. His earnings were $49... His earnings were $49,991 with a refund of $2,645. And her earnings are $39,294 with a refund of $374. Neither claim dependents. The application lists assets totaling $21,140 and $14,628.22 in liabilities. He's not able to attend today to answer any questions. He had a conflict in his schedule.
Thank you, Melinda. Are there any questions for Melinda? Since we do not have a petitioner here, I would look for your conversation. Commissioner...
Melinda, why is the spouse not included on this? Is she not going to be in joint tenancy on the property?
It's my understanding that that was the plan in our initial conversation with the petitioner. However, he did comment later that he would not add her because of the lien that exists in her name. I suppose it was the lender's decision to only consider one member as the applicant for the loan.
I'm sure they want the business.
There's over $70,000 on this. Well, it isn't even all on the house, so Commissioner Karski?
It's not two liens for two, or the same amount. It's basically one lien on both of them for the same amount.
Well, her amount is greater because she has additional legal fees.
Yeah, but his is 29 and hers is 39.
Yes, sir.
$70,000. Yeah, so I kind of asked our civil attorney about this. And if we forgive the lien on him, it remains on her. And I would imagine that if they're married and if something happened to him, he dies, whatever, she would receive the property. There's a lien on her and if she ever went to sell it, it would basically be a judgment that we would be able to collect at that point. I'm looking at this thinking, we're never, the odds of us ever seeing any money on this lien are very remote. In fact, most of this lien summary goes back to 2006, goes back 16 years. You know, forgiving this lien would make them a homeowner. And maybe someday we'll see something. I don't know.
Madam Chair, if Dean owed me $70,000, I'd settle for 50. But these guys aren't offering us anything. Over the years, we do appreciate small payments on a monthly basis. I mean, even $25 a month for three years would soften my heart somewhat. But then we get the bum rush with the closing on the 23rd of February. I don't know why they always wait until the last second to bring them to us, although it's not next week, which is normally what has happened. I'm not in favor of this at this point. Show me the money. Let's make a deal. But I'm not ready to let this all go. And I don't like the deal where they're married, but, you know, her liens don't seem to count. I don't like it.
I would say that I agree with Jeff. Generally speaking, we make some sort of restitution with a partial payment. And if people have made or had the intent of making payments of any value over the years, that would be a very positive thing. But at this point, we haven't seen either one of those. And I'm concerned about, frankly, not only the size of the lien, but it seems like we're becoming almost the bank in some cases for this process.
I don't see Commissioner Bender moving, so I'm just going to make a comment. And I would say this is a $300,000 house. And right now they owe us darn near $70,000. And if they're serious about this, then maybe they should find a $250,000 house and pay us the remainder. I think it is a little bit far out there. We have in the past accepted 50%, like Commissioner Burr said, if they've been making payments. So Commissioner Karski?
A $300,000 house is about an average home in Sioux Falls and they're impossible to find. I mean, if they don't, they go, I don't know if they're losing their earnest money, if they're not able to complete this deal, they would not.
No, I was told that they would not.
Okay. But just finding a house is quite unlikely. This person did have some problems. They did pay a debt to society by being incarcerated for a period of time. Plus then we stick them with the legal bills. And we say, well, you got to pay this back too. I'm feeling a little bit more compassion on this one. And I understand the conversation. But when you're incarcerated, a certain amount of debt has already been paid back to society for what happened. So I'm, my position.
Commissioner Bender?
Since I wasn't moving when Cindy looked at me earlier. You know, these are difficult. Every time we have one of these on the agenda, I'm always, I just always wish we didn't have them on the agenda generally. But this is what we get paid the big bucks for, apparently. I, you know, I understand Commissioner Karski's argument. And I do, I would like to see, I do like to see people housed. And there is the argument about having them on the tax rolls. I think at the end of the day, what is compelling to me is that our historical precedence has always been that we require some payment. And here we're not being offered any payment for what is, you know, for most of the ones that we've looked at, this is a very substantial debt. And this is not a debt to the five of us up here. It's a debt to the taxpayers of Minnehaha County. And, you know, it is part of, a part of the rules that when you have a debt, you need to pay part of that debt back. And so I, at this time, I'm, while I'm sympathetic, I would not, I would support not accepting and removing this lien at this time.
Commissioner Burr?
Commissioner Bender is right. And there are 185,000 people not in this room that are owed this money. And I think that, you know, some in the hand is worth two in the bush, so to speak. And Dean is right, Cindy, you're right. If they could pay us a chunk of it, we might consider it. But I also know that one year we had a murderer in the penitentiary that owed us like $26,000. I don't know what crimes these people have committed, but to owe $70,000, I assume they had public defenders. Maybe they had court-appointed attorneys that are more expensive, as our attorneys all know. But I, it's, should we defer it or just turn it down?
I think if we could have no action, nothing happens. Is that correct, counsel?
That's one way to approach it, certainly. I don't know that, given a closing date later this month, that deferring it makes any real sense. So I think it'd be better either to take no action or to affirmatively reject the application.
I'll make a motion to deny the request.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the request. Roll call vote. Burr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Karski?
No.
Heiburger? Aye, motion passes four to one.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you, Melinda. Item number 17 is a briefing discuss the 2022 legislative updates. Tyler?
Good morning, Tyler, Commission Office. Today's legislative update is through legislative date 12. One of the beauties of this update is that it is a snapshot in time, so it's actually quite outdated today. So you see there's quite a few other bills that have been introduced since this was put together. I do want to highlight a couple. House Bill 1053, which I discussed in my last briefing two weeks ago, I guess, was actually delayed for hearing until February 3rd. House Bill 1089, which was addressing mobile homes, I believe, was withdrawn by the prime sponsor. And House Bill 1116 that I missed on my report here, some interest there. It would change our primary date for the presidential election only to Super Tuesday instead of later in June, where it's currently at now. There was some mixed support for that in the committee. It's actually been pushed back at the request for a fiscal note. So we'll know more about that probably in our next report. I would point out that Thursday is the last day for bills to be dropped, so a lot of the excitement will taper off then. You get to see my notes in the version I uploaded. I uploaded the wrong one. But the information is still the right stuff. Otherwise, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those. But that is what I have for the legislative update so far.
Okay, any questions?
Comment?
Commissioner Burr?
You know, the building code revision, which would require us to get three quotes on how much a cost there would be, should we put in new building requirements? They're not funding it, so we would have to pay for getting those quotes as a county, which makes it, it's not necessarily a bad idea, but it's an unfunded mandate.
And I would point out that in smaller counties, it might be even more of a challenge than it is for us, so. Commissioner Karski?
I'm trying to remember the bill, but the, I guess, and this was introduced by the governor to remove the fees for concealed carry and...
Yeah. As of yesterday, I don't think it has been dropped yet, but it's on her website. I know the sheriff's office has reviewed it and they're, I don't want to speak for them, but they do have, you know, general concerns about how removing that funding would influence how they're still doing the same amount of work, if not more, but for...
Yeah, the cost of fingerprinting, the, you know, the background checks, et cetera, still have to be done. And then that cost would not be borne by the applicant, it would be borne by all the taxpayers of the county.
It's an over $20,000 expense
Yeah.
that we would be bearing. So we, hopefully, if that gets dropped, that will get changed because we shouldn't have to do the work for free.
Be our government, our state government forgiving a county revenue source.
It's not a big revenue source, but it's
No, but it's still something.
Any other questions on legislative ones?
Madam Chair?
One more?
There's a bill to allow easier access to abandoned cemeteries. I don't know if you noticed that, but I forwarded it on to Kathy Walker with the Abandoned Cemeteries Board. And she sent it on to the rest of that crew. And I think they're pretty excited about it because not every abandoned cemetery is easy to access. There's one on the east side in the Odie acreage. And it's 100 yards out into a cornfield. And, you know, for the octogenarians on our abandoned cemeteries board, that's pretty tough to thrash through. But hopefully, we can work stuff out with all of those properties.
We have one addition. Gary Tushen is here from Carroll Institute about a piece of legislation that has dropped to help them consolidate some of their property. Do you want to talk about Tyler? Do you want Gary to talk about it?
If the source is here, that's probably better. My understanding is that they're looking for a letter of support as they move towards adding 75 beds to their residential facility. This process would involve selling their downtown location with the hopes of then making a more of a campus feel for what they currently do. Yeah, if Mr. Tushen would like to address that, I'd be happy to yield my time to him.
And I'll give him an opportunity to speak. My thought was, you haven't, none of you have had a chance. I got a letter from, or an email from Gary. I forwarded it to Carol. She forwarded it to you this morning. If you could take an opportunity today to look at it and let Carol know if you would like to support that letter of support. I just want to have you have an opportunity to think about it instead of making a spur-of-the-moment decision. Carol would be able to draft that up and send it on to Gary. But I don't want you to make a decision here because it isn't really a decision to be made here, I don't think. But Gary, I would like to give you an opportunity to speak a little bit about what this bill is about.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. We are experiencing a heavy demand, as you can imagine, in our transitional treatment facility. Back in 15, we built on 87 beds. We currently have 110. But since 2015, we've seen a demand upwards of 100 on a waiting list. So our effort now is to enhance the campus where all programming is being taken place, sell our downtown office, which, by the way, we've had it appraised three years ago and it was appraised at 1.4. So we're in hopes that we'll get more than that. We've been working with Vandoval Architects as far as the design and the estimated cost of the project to expand beds and move programs and services from 310 as we sell that property. Total project will be about $6.8 million. So our hope is that we can contribute at least 1.8 million with the sale and then seek funding through the legislature. Just as an FYI, last week I spent a day out there and got the necessary sponsor in both the Senate and the House side, drafted a bill. I haven't seen it yet. Obviously tomorrow is the last day, so it's probably going to be dropped today or tomorrow. And so it's a creative piece because we can ill afford that kind of financing. We're still paying off the 2015 building. That was a $4.5 million project. We have that down to $2 million now. So taking on additional debt would be prohibitive. And we really want to respond to the folks that are being released on probation or parole and giving them an opportunity to get to a situation where housing is not a burden and a barrier as far as their lifestyle. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gary, how big of a region do you support? Is it just Minnehaha County or are some of our neighboring counties also using your facility?
The programming is funded by the Department of Social Services. I've not sought any support from Lincoln County, though.
No, I'm saying people. What type of, I mean, is it just Minnehaha County residents that use your facility? Or do you have people from other counties that use your facility for treatment?
We will have from outer counties, yes. And as far as Rapid City, Pennington County, coming to Sioux Falls.
Those are regional. Additional questions for Gary? Okay, Gary, they have their marching orders and you'll hear back from Carol.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'd look for liaison reports.
Madam Chair? Go ahead.
Commissioner Karski?
Last week, the link had, we had our executive board meeting, our annual meeting. Officers are the same as they were in the past. The mayor's the chair, I'm the vice chair. And Paul Hanson and Dave Flechek from Avera and Sanford are the secretary and treasurers. Two big issues there. One, we're trying to fill a social worker position that's been open, basically since we've been open. And social workers are not easy to find. And the second one is, we're looking to increase security at the link, just at least on a staggered shift basis. So we may end up with a contract renegotiation because of the cost of doing that. So just heads up.
Additional liaison? Commissioner Burr?
Madam Chair, I just was going to comment. Last week I talked about the little bit of contention we had at planning and zoning with the transfer of three eligibilities to the corner of 72nd Street North and Jim's Weep Memorial. Anyway, this week then, we got notice that the city is going to annex most of the area just to the west of there. And then additionally, I got an email, I think many of us did, from the township with the concern about leaving a couple hundred yards of the worst gravel road in their township for them to still care for, as opposed to having the city pave and take over all of that road. And I guess additionally, my understanding is that they're planning on eventually cutting off Highway 229 going north into Highway 125, Jim's Weep Highway, which I think is pretty heavily used by people like Jay Major and Steve Howgard who live on that road.
Additional comments? I'm not sure if our highway superintendent just walked in on this and is interested in commenting, and you sure don't have to, we'd be putting you on the spot.
He's fearless.
He just got put on the spot, so I apologize.
I wasn't listening in the next room. I was talking about Highway 55.
Well, we were talking about, sorry, 72nd Street North going into Highway 125 or Jim's Weep Highway. And the fact that the state is talking about cutting off the connection between 229 and Jim's Weep Highway, even though it's fairly heavily used.
Right now, there is no plans to improve that interchange. It's in the 20-year plan. And it's one of the concepts that's out there. But it would be a long way out there and there would be plenty of time for us to comment if... and there would be plenty of time for us to comment if that would ever happen. One of our assistant highway superintendent has seen that on some long-range plans, but there'd be plenty of opportunity for the county and townships and the city of Sioux Falls to have input on that before any final decision would be made.
Sounds like we got years.
Chair, shows you how important the UDC group is because they would come before them and hopefully they would be, have the awareness to give a close look at that.
Additional liaison reports? Thank you, Steve, for jumping up for us.
Commissioner Hyberger?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't jump in quite quick enough. I've not been moving fast enough apparently this morning. I was able to go to the Sioux Falls Development Foundation Board last week and gave an update on the task force we put together in the WH Lyon Fairgrounds. There's quite a bit of interest expressed by the members of that development foundation and folks were, I just wanted to let folks know that the applications now are available on our website and if folks that have contacted us individually should have gotten an email for that, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are taking applications now and looking forward to getting that process launched.
All right, any other? Commissioner Bennega?
She took the words right out of my mouth.
That was my call.
You didn't act quick enough.
Well, it's okay being slow once in a while, but you're right. There has been significant interest and I think we've all been contacted by multiple people, so it'll be interesting on how we go through that selection process.
Okay, no other liaison reports. I would look for non-action commission discussion, your old business or new business. Commissioner Burr?
So, in today's bills, there were 17 occurrences of decedent transport at $400 apiece. That's a pretty high number. Basically, that is for people who die without the supervision of a medical person, so at home, on the highway, and we pay for the transport to the medical examiner. 17 occurrences.
Okay, seeing no other old or new business, I would look for a motion to recess into executive session immediately following their commission meeting, but we will take about a 10-minute recess in there. So, a motion for recess?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.